Yep, we're live now.
Okay, meeting is streaming. Got it. Okay, then I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, and the time is 7:01. Okay, I'd like to ask all who can stand, wait a minute, let me see, can I share my screen, Mike? Can I share my screen?
Do you have it?
Share screen, yep. Okay, all who can, please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisually, liberty, and justice for all. All right, now that everyone's got back in their seat, I'll do a little roll call. Okay, please let me know if you're here. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Blumey? Absent. Evan Levitt Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack? Absent. Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice, here. Richard Cortez?
Here.
Yeah. Julie Eaton?
Here.
Yeah. And Sean Glenn?
Here.
All right, that was a little quiet, Sean. I don't know, try again.
Here.
Yeah, that's better. Okay, so we have two absent regular members, so I will promote two people. Let's see, Julie, you were promoted last time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote Rich and Sean today.
Okay.
The record will show you are present. Very good. Okay, so Rich and Sean, you guys are full members tonight. Again, I think, okay, I'd like to make a motion to move the review of the minutes from the last meeting. The following item four, which was referrals from the Board of Selectmen. Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, Aaron? All in favor of moving the approval of minutes later on in the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go right to the referrals from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Glidden, is this something you want to kick us off with? You're on mute, Mike.
So, we have some more documentation from the Trust for Public Lands, and I can, I'll load up the presentation right now and turn the floor over to Honor to go over the information. They worked hard on answering a lot of the questions from this commission. So with that.
Thanks, Mike, and everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hi, Honor. Thanks for joining us again.
Great, thanks for having me. So I know one of the big topics last time we met on Zoom was sort of the question about the financials and the economic implications on, you know, an open space acquisition versus development. And so while I didn't have time to have our conservation finance team do a vetted economic analysis, that, you know, that would take some time on our end, and we didn't have it. But I did try and put together sort of some of the very basics of the economics here for your reference. And if there's, you know, a point where we could do more, we can do more, it's just gonna take us some time. And, you know, I figured I'll give you what I have now, and we can cross that bridge as we get to it. So, next slide, Mike. So just to remind you guys, this is regarding the Meadowwood property. It's permanent and approved subdivision 296. And we are discussing the town's purchase of the fee with various conservation restrictions on the property, including an area for athletic fields, an area for continued farming, an area for open space and trails, and a historic memorialization of this as a place in history because of Martin Luther King Jr.'s presence here and other members of the American Civil Rights Movement that worked on this farm back in the 1940s. So, next slide.
I'm not seeing the next slide.
If it might be frozen, I can.
So my ground mute.
So.
Sorry, it's unfrozen. Let me reload it.
I'll just talk a little bit more about the project itself, just to remind anybody, or for those of you that are alternates and weren't here last time. The Trust for Public Land is a national conservation organization. Our mission is land for people. And we, we have a goal of connecting people with nature, of creating parks and protecting open space for generations to come. And this project came across the transom about a year ago. And with given its historic and cultural importance in this community, and really as, you know, on the national level, we saw this as an opportunity to protect it and preserve it for the benefit of the community, for the state, and really for, you know, all those people that can use this site in the future and reflect and, you know, connect with their history and their culture and, you know, the important people that use this land. And so this is a breakdown of, so I'll start sort of at the cost of community services. In Connecticut, and generally this is sort of a trend that we see in the Northeast and elsewhere, that residential land generally costs communities significantly more than the tax dollars that they receive from the development of, so for each tax dollar raised in a residential community, the town actually has to expend anywhere from, you know, you'll see these numbers. It's, it's a dollar and five cents up to a dollar thirty-three cents in, you know, a town that is somewhat comparable to Simsbury in that it's in the same general region as you look at Farmington. And so, so the sort of trend is that residential is actually, actually costs towns a lot of money, even though you generally think, okay, expanding the tax base will lead to, you know, more revenue for the town. Typically, it just, they don't cover themselves in the, in the financial breakdown when you think about all the services that residences require. And, and so that's sort of where I wanted to start with this. And then, you know, I give you a second to look at some of these numbers. Generally, commercial and industrial are winners, and they, they cost less than they generate. And then it's the same as open space and working lands. They, they tend to cost the community very little in expended, in expenditures. Next slide. So there are methods for calculating these costs of community service. They're in depth, and it takes a lot of time, but UMass Amherst and if this slideshow is sort of available to you in PDF or something, you know, you can take a look at this website that I provided that allows you to calculate the costs there. But what we did is I had just a very quick rundown of what it would cost Simsbury for a 20-year bond on $2.2 million. And it came out to roughly $16 per household, and that uses the average home price at $349, and I think the average assessment around $230,000. So, so if you think about the, the cost of the bond and the cost per household. Sorry, one second, Lexi. I'm on a conference call. Can you just go get your mom? And I will be right with you in a few moments. Sorry about that. So the, if you actually think about the cost of development and you figure, okay, you know, just to spread that $349,000 sort of uniformly off of, on 300 homes, you know, you're looking at an actual cost to the town of, you know, anywhere from $2 to $600,000 a year. And, you know, that's rough. I'm not an economist. I haven't done the analyses. But I have done, you know, the sort of rough calculation that you can see in terms of like, you know, a ratio of 1 to 1.2, and, and those are sort of the numbers that you come out with. Next slide. So, so those are sort of, that's the, the financial side of things that is sort of quantifiable in if an in-depth analysis is done. The, there are other factors to consider here, and, you know, I, I sort of wanted to show this slide as just a general overview of the threats to Connecticut's open spaces and open lands and rivers and streams and, you know, wildlife that, you know, we are a very developed state by all, you know, comparable standards, I guess. And I think, you know, preserving open space has, has a whole slew of benefits that aren't really quantifiable. You know, cleaner rivers, less water treatment, you know, the benefits to wildlife corridors that improve tourism opportunities. And, you know, those are things that are really hard to measure with, with dollars and cents, but they're also very important to quality of life and, and to, you know, a thriving community. Next slide. So this is just sort of the, you know, a quick answer to the threat. You know, open space can really help reverse these trends. Clean air, good agricultural production, you know, having open space and stormwater buffers is really important to communities and can really lower the cost of services. And, you know, good communities attract good workers and good employers, and that, you know, has, has a definite economic return on it. Next slide. So just a breakdown of the outdoor industry in Connecticut. You know, I thought this would be sort of an interesting thing to show. It, it supports roughly 70,000 jobs, nine billion in consumer spending, close to three billion in salaries, 734 million in state and local tax, and more jobs in Connecticut depend on outdoor recreation than the aerospace and defense industry, which is sort of alarming if you think about it. And, you know, this, this is talking about ski areas and active recreation, passive recreation, state parks, you know, camp rentals, hunting, fishing, but it's, it's definitely a big industry. Next slide. So these, I, I sort of went over some of these, but, you know, perceived, translating perceived values into dollars, it's hard. But these are some of the sort of, you know, big benefits that open space can provide. You know, benefits to public health, economic development, recreation, bolstering tourism, natural goods and services, protecting the water quality, supporting farming, fishing, forestry, and enhancing property values. Next slide. So like I said, we can do the analyses, the cost of community service or the return on investment. We have done a number of them over the years since we, you know, we really started doing them sometime in the 80s. And, and they're very compelling, and we've done them for, I think that sort of most applicable one here would be the one that we did in Vermont, which was a, a big report on the economic benefits of state parks and open space. But what we've seen is that for every dollar invested in state land conservation programs, it returns roughly four to, anywhere from $4 to $11 in natural goods. And, you know, that's, that's nothing to sort of shake your head at. So, next slide. This is, I, I think it's called the Olmstead Principle, but generally homes near conserved lands are often worth more and increase in property value when land next to them is conserved. And we've seen that time and again with state parks, with just conserved open space, land trust properties. People want to be near open land and recreational opportunities. And, you know, that property, property value increase often leads to increased tax dollars to the town to offset the dollars that are lost, you know, supposedly lost in, in not capitalizing on that potential tax base. Next slide. Questions?
The, yeah, a lot of this, I, I think, is well, well-known and accepted. The residential neighborhoods cost money to the town. I think, I think that's well-known. I get, I don't argue with anything you've said. I just had a question, though, about the value of the outdoor industry. How would that play to this particular parcel? I mean, what outdoor industry is going to make some money on that spot?
So, you know, generally, when you have open space and trails, you know, you're gonna see an increase in usage. People are gonna come into the community, spend money. You know, in, in this particular case, you know, it's not, I'm not saying you would, it would employ someone new and you'd have a park steward. But if, for example, you know, the land trust said, hey, we're gonna be the stewards of these trails, and in order to be stewards of these trails, we need a stewardship director or a stewardship intern or something. And so those are sort of the, you know, they're, they're not directly, you can't say that this property is gonna employ necessarily a certain number of people, but the economy.
Increase in backpack sales, maybe? Also, it's not a big thing. It's, it's an impact. Okay.
Well, Alan, maybe, you know, we could project if there were athletic fields at some point. You know, they would pay referees to officiate the games, you know, something like that.
Yeah, it, it's not a big thing, but yeah, it's there, I think.
All right, Honor, I know that, you know, the numbers that you presented to us are, you know, educated guesses at this point, but I just want to understand, there was a figure of $16.67 per, I think it was household?
Right.
Per year for 20 years? That, that, that's the projection?
Right.
Okay, understood.
And I, I think there was a slide that had the, you know, sort of if, if it was a 20-year bond for $2.2 million, if it were for $3 million, for $4 million. And it's, yeah, here we go, the, um, yeah, it's sort of small, but, but basically.
Okay, I see what I never.
For a home that's $100,000, of course, they're gonna be paying a little bit less. I think it's $5. Whereas if it's a million-dollar home, you're, you might be paying $50 a year.
Yeah, okay, understood.
One comment I'll, I'll make is that if the public is to get behind this, we have to, somebody has to find a way to explain it using some of this instead of just saying the town is buying more open space. Because that, people will condense things into one sentence, okay? And that isn't nearly as attractive as numbers, I think.
So.
I think, honestly, just running on like the whole Black Lives Matter movement. Like, we had so many students in Simsbury standing up and like recognizing their history here. And Simsbury has a history in that part. And so I think like if you were to address the history and the reality and all that, that holds, that space and the value it has, I think we could, I think we could convince people.
So. I agree, Sean. I agree. That's exactly.
Good point.
Yeah, I, I think it's a huge selling point, and it could be a focal point and bring people in to learn history right in your own backyard. I, I, I think it's priceless. And especially in the climate. Yeah.
I think that's probably true, Aaron. I'm not sure how you capitalize on that. What you put there to draw people to learn. Unless some grant comes along and there's a Martin Luther King and Connecticut Library, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how you capitalize on that.
That probably will happen, Alan. Yeah. I think that would. Look for a grant and, yeah.
Yep, that would be great. That would be great. To me, I, in lieu of studying the minutes, I spent a lot of time reading this. It's a matter of what do we think is going to happen? A residential development, part of which is affordable housing. Right away, some people might say, well, we need more affordable housing. Current events has, has told us that there's a, a particular need for that, made more people aware of it. But that particular statute doesn't make it more affordable to people that need affordable housing. I mean, they make it available to a segment of that population, so I'm going to discount that in my mind. Will, will the owner of the property, do they really intend to build this great big development? I don't know. I just don't know. I don't think that they're keen on it right now. I think that they've said something about market forces and, and it's, I don't think it's the right time for them to build this. So are we purchasing this property as a defense against a big, big housing development? It's the cost that Honor shared with us about the per household and all that. And that does include education, but I don't think it includes a new elementary school. And when they were talking about the first Meadowwoods proposal, that's the first thing people say, we're gonna have to build a new school. Now you're talking about like $30 million. So.
Yeah.
If, if we believe they're really going to build that housing thing, and we don't know, do it. Then if they really build the housing, it's not only that there's no profit per household to the town, but the expenses may be more than even Honor shared with us here. If a new school is required. Look at all the ifs in there. Who knows? We just don't know about this. So in my mind, I've been trying to balance a conservation itch that I'd like to scratch if I could. As long as it doesn't soak the town so badly at a time when we don't have the money to be soaked. So the cost to the town is not just $2.2 million. There may be ongoing costs that, that we just can't calculate exactly now. So if I'm hedging, it's because I'm hedging. So I, I think you can't convert this to strict dollars and cents. I think her presentation was very good in that it, it tells us that housing is not a moneymaker for towns. I'd be curious what other people think about this.
Um, Honor, can you tell me if anyone has discussed reevaluating the value of that property, given the current economic condition and what we expect to see over the next year or two?
Yeah, so, so the Trust for Public Land, in order to purchase the property, or excuse me, go into contract to purchase the property, we did a, an appraisal. And that was done earlier this year, so, you know, very well, but before COVID, obviously. And, you know, the, the trends that we're actually seeing are, are, you know, the, the inventory is actually very low, and, and that's affecting really lower Fairfield County and New Haven County. But, but the general trend is people are moving back into the suburbs. I mean, it's, you know, it's a scary time to be in a city. And, you know, we don't know really how that will affect Simsbury, at least I don't know. But before we, as we're applying for grant funds, which we will, we'll have to be doing appraisals on the property to, to sort of, since it's, it's being conserved in these components, we'll be doing appraisals on these component pieces. So for the open space component, we'll do an appraisal of 138 acres of open space and the value of that piece alone. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but we will be appraising it in real time and, you know, keeping our finger on the pulse. And, you know, we have a fixed price with the, with the landowner. So, you know, if the value were to, to plummet, it would, it would be problematic for us. But, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to, to still conserve it and, you know, move forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't know what it's worth right now, but it's not worth the same amount it was before.
It's worth $6 million. I'm sorry?
Exactly.
It's worth $6 million.
Yeah, that's right.
10% is a lot if it dropped that much. I know that the, the loan market right now for, for new homes is not doing very well. It's all in the refi right now, and we don't know what the market's gonna do going forward. So. Anyway, yeah, if you're gonna do that in real time, that's fine. I'm just concerned that we might end up paying, if, if we go far with this, that we end up paying too much.
Understandable. Actually, Rich, there's, there's, um, there is an inventory in Simsbury, and a good friend up the street just sold their house. They had multiple offers, and they got much more than asking price. And the reason is, is because there was no inventory. So houses are actually going for more because of that. So I, you know, I get your point. I think it's valid, but it's, um, because of the low inventory, it's, it's kind of a seller's market, so to speak.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that the Planning Commission is chartered to do, you know, the, the financial analysis of, of the procurement of the land. We, we were here to determine if the proposal, or at least the plan as it's being presented, is consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
I was just answering, just making a comment to Rich's comment. That's, that, I mean, they were talking about.
Yeah, I know. I just, I don't want the conversation to get too far off track.
You're absolutely right, Bill. No problem.
So Mike, or, you know, I think from our last meeting, we tabled any, any decisions on a referral to tonight. Right. And, and the, the Board of Selectmen is expecting a, a, some type of response from this commission as of this meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So I see we have, you know, a couple people from Griffin with us. Is, are you guys here for the, the same subject, or are you talking about the potential re-permitting again? Are you here for support?
Hi, it's Tim Luskely. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Tim.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
No, we're, we're just here to answer any questions that might come up that are directed our way.
Okay.
Already talked about the permanent extension, eh? You know, last time, if there's questions about that, we can be happy to answer those, too. You know, one thing I would like to point out that might be germane to your earlier question about values is it, it's my understanding that the appraisal that the Trust for Public Land has conducted is actually for a value that is higher than what we have agreed to sell the property for. So there is a bargain sale argument to be made as well, the fact of that it's just an opportunity to preserve a very large piece of land. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Anyone, anyone willing to prepare a motion? And maybe a motion, either, you know, a positive referral or a negative referral. But in either case, please cite the, the pertinent sections in the 2017 P O C D. That, that would make it really good.
Well, there's quite, in the P O C D, 5.3, 5.33, coordinate with other organizations to protect land resources. So that would be one. And then four point, 5.4. Oh, what? Nope, I take that back. Again, it's, yeah, 5.4 has something about working with other organizations, so 5.3, 5.4.
Yep. How about, you know, section five is entitled Protect Natural Resources.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty all encompassing.
Yep.
And then section six is Preserve Open Space.
Correct.
So I think if this were to come to fruition, it would satisfy both those sections of the P O C D.
Especially 6.2. Especially six point two.
Okay.
Strive to create an open space system with interconnected trails and other amenities is appropriate.
Very good. I would argue to promote places with a sense of place.
Yep, I think that, if not a direct, but maybe a, a, a peripheral, uh, influence. Okay, so, uh, who's gonna, who's gonna turn that into a motion? Erin, let's give it a shot.
Okay, so, um, a, a motion on the floor would be to give a positive referral for the Meadow Wood project, um, as it pertains to the section five and section six in the P O C D, which talks about, um, protecting natural resources and striving to create open space.
Very good, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so we have Erin made the motion for a positive referral. Holly seconded, is there any discussion, commissioners? All in favor of returning a positive referral to the Board of Selectmen for the Meadow Wood Preservation Project, please say aye. Any, uh, 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 against, please say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mike, um, I, I know that you'll craft the words, but I could, uh, you know, let, just, uh, let me have a look before you send it over to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll email it to you later this week, so you can take a look at it.
Yeah, okay, I'll be on the lookout, great, I think this, you know, um, uh, the, the people of Simsbury really will appreciate this. Uh, I thi- I think it's a, yeah, it, it, it's right, right up the, uh, right, right, you know, right in the wheelhouse of the P O C D. Great, thanks, Honor, and Pat and Tim.
Thank you. So much for having me again, and, um, we look forward to working with all of you, um, hopefully, over the course of next year.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, bye bye.
Thanks for your time.
Hey, Rich, just, um, would any of this be, um, something? I don't want to say points, but with the, um, sustainable C T?
Um, I believe it will at some point, yes.
Commissioner, it was very nice job, you know, uh, for, everyone stayed nice and objective, I liked it, and there were, uh, salient questions and, and we'll see what happens to the project.
It has to go to vote, correct?
Yes, correct, it'll be a referendum.
Referendum, okay.
In November.
Yep.
I just hope somebody does a good job.
If the Board of Selectmen approves the, uh, project.
Correct, correct.
Good point, good point, sorry.
And good point, Alan, they, you know, how do you market this in a way to?
Well, you, you gotta explain what we've been talking about, I think, you know?
Yep.
I mean, there's always.
I know, it'll, it'll make the Open Space Commission pretty happy.
I should think so, you don't know anybody on that, do you, Bill?
Well, you know, I'm the black sheep, you know, every chance I get.
Always, always somebody that says, why am I paying more in taxes, so that I, the town has a better view. There's always somebody that limits it to that, and so we need to expand the conversation, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I think the, the important point is you're paying more taxes if it all got developed.
Well, you could, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that has to be part of the discussion, point that out to people.
But, I mean, to me, the deciding factor really is more, this has a historic
Exactly.
issue attached to it.
Exactly, I agree.
That, according to what they wrote, goes all the way up to this, the, the Department of Interior wanted to mark this property as a historic property. That, that says something, that, that's something you need to think about really preserving. Um, if it didn't have any of that to it, I might be questioning why we would be doing it in a, in a time where, you know, the budget's tight and everything else, but, you know, regardless of when it happens, this is something I think for me, that is, is something that I would want to.
Right, so Rich, you know, you, you're, you're a resident, you vote, right, you'll, you'll have your chance to, um, uh, you know, kind of influence that in, in the election, or I'm sorry, in the referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be curious to, to see which way the town goes, um, I, I don't, I personally, I don't, I don't have my finger on the pulse of it anymore. Uh, I know it, you know, uh, ten years ago, it was buy, 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 you know, preserve, preserve, preserve.
Yeah.
Now we have numbers like thirty five percent of the, of, of, of the town's uh, land is either, you know, town owned, open space, or, or preserved in some other fashion. So we'll see, uh, it's gonna be very interesting. Okay, now, let's go, gonna go back in the agenda to item number three, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, June ninth, twenty twenty meeting, so Alan, if you are prepared, uh, as Secretary to lead us through there, that would be great.
Okay, um, looking, June ninth, twenty twenty, page one. Does anybody have anything?
No comments from me.
Nope.
Okay, page two. Page three.
I did on one sixteen. I, I don't, it's not a big deal, but, um, where it said, um, and asked Ms. Lawler, can the property be used, and I'm just, should it say? If the property? Can the, I, it just was worded weirdly, I, it's not a biggie, but I just. Yeah, whether or if the property, I don't know, it just, so anyway, I don't know. If it's not a big deal, I, I don't, I can leave it. It just read awkwardly, I had to read it a couple of times.
Well, there's an is, there could be an are too, but I don't know if it's worth the effort.
Okay, so then don't worry.
Okay. Anything on, uh, the next page?
Yeah, line one fifty. It should be ten and two oh two, not ten thousand, two oh two.
Okay, so that's, yeah, State Road, ten and two oh two.
Yeah.
Okay, next page.
There needs to be a space on two twenty nine. It's Chairman Rice asked, you've got a new last name, Bill.
Oh, okay.
Well, in action, apostrophe, but, but, yeah, so Chairman Rice, there should be a space.
Yep, two twenty nine, space between Rice and Ask.
Okay, last page.
No comments from me. Amanda, nice, nice job, that, that was a, that was a long meeting with a lot to capture.
Exactly.
It's very, very good, and just these little editorial or typo things are, uh, should reflect on, uh, how well you did the job, but, okay, we do have a couple of, uh,
It's hard to take minutes, those are great minutes, it's very hard to do.
No, they're very, very well done.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the detail, everything.
Someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Well, uh, before we do that, could we have a motion to accept the minute?
I second Erin's motion.
I'm sorry.
I'm not bringing that vote to the floor.
I move we approve the minutes as amended for June ninth, twenty twenty.
All right, Alan Needham makes the motion to approve minutes.
I second.
Erin seconds it. All in favor of, uh, approving the minutes as amended, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no or nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Give me a second to write here, Erin.
Sorry, I thought it was, I was like, wow, Bill's really pushing to end the meeting, so I'm like, okay, I'll make a motion.
So, uh, I will give Mr. Glidden the opportunity to, uh, share any correspondence or any other, uh, bits of information that, that we should be made aware of.
So, I should have your affordable housing plan ready for your next meeting.
Awesome.
Um, I, I had some comments from Alan, did anyone else have comments on that, the draft that was shared with the commission previously? I know, Bill, you wanted the sixty percentile income level added into that tables, they will, they're added. If anyone else has, uh, anything, please email them to me, so I can incorporate them in time for the meeting.
Okay.
The other thing is, uh, last week FEMA issued the, uh, draft, uh, revisions to the flood insurance rate maps. And we've started digesting them, and there's, there's some changes, um, they've changed base flood elevations, they changed extents of the floodplains, some have extended further than they previously did, others have, are actually smaller, um, just, it's just, it's the public service announcement, announcement I'm doing to all the commissions is please, um, take a look at those, if they affect you, or you know someone that they may affect, we're going to try to have them uploaded onto our website, so people can access the maps.
All right, so you're, you're trying to get the word out to the commissions, not, not as commission business, but as a word to the community.
Correct.
Okay, yep, I can.
So we would find those where, Mike, when you get them on the website?
We're gonna put them on my department's webpage, so we'll be on the Planning Department's webpage.
Now, as a very fast aside, uh, we're purchasing some stuff on a lake. And the bank told me that some outfit in Texas is, uh, contracted with FEMA. That sound right, Mike? And they're basically calling for flood insurance to all kinds of properties on the lake, their rule of thumb is if the water touches your lawn, you need um, flood insurance.
That's correct, and what gets worse is what, the way you can appeal it, you have to get an elevation certificate, so you have to hire a surveyor to cer- certify the house is outside of the flood hazard, and sometimes, I've seen people where.
Flood hazard, I submitted a picture worth thirty five, forty feet up.
So. Yeah, no, yeah, we, we'll.
This is in another town, guys.
Alan's trying to get free counsel.
Thing, if there, if that kind of change is going on in the northwest of the state, that is gonna affect some things here, is gonna affect property values, all kinds of things.
Well, it, it, the insurance rates are really what people are gonna get hit with.
Yeah.
Um, because the other, the other warning is, is the Riverine properties will be receiving their increases now. So the, the policies are gonna increase in up to twenty one percent. Um, so people are gonna get, not only they get a rate increase, they're gonna also have these new maps. So it's a two for one that's occurring in the same calendar year. So that's why I really want to get the word out, and I mean, just as a public service announcement, that these maps are there. And that people really need to look at them if it affects their property.
Mike, do you know if they, in Simsbury, they've established any, uh, uh, you know, waterways that were not currently or previously, uh, on the map?
So, so part of the engineered study where they did survey work and upgrade, up, updated the flood insurance study was the Farmington River, Hop Brook, Minister Brook, um, Stratton Brook, I'm trying to remember, I'm missing one more, so th- they, they studied those, the other watercourses in town were part of what's called an approximate study, so they did not survey those watercourses, but they use new LiDAR data to, to use, to depict the edge of the, uh, uh, flood hazard.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, it's, it was, it's a, it's a big change, and it's gonna, it's gonna affect some people.
Well, because premiums can be four or five hundred a month.
Yep, there, there is.
For flood insurance, Alan?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a gentleman in this town, I won't say where he lives, it's not a Riverside Road property, he is paying upwards of it's thirteen thousand dollars a year in flood insurance, so he's paying basically a mortgage payment for insurance each month.
And then he goes to sell his house.
Yeah.
He's got that too, but.
Exactly.
Yep.
Mike, are they typically properties that border those waterways, or does it extend typically a hundred yards, or no answer?
So, so it, it's kind of, it, it's based on engineering, topography, and proximity to water, watercourses. So the maps are supposed to be the worst case scenario, you know, let's say, culverts fail, uh, extreme amount of rain, frozen ground conditions, so there's, you could, you could, like, let's say that you own a property and, and the stream is, uh, i- i- it's not even on your property. But yet the map will say you're in the hundred year floodplain, that's possible. So, and that's the other thing, I, I, you know, I went through and identified people that have been now mapped in, and there was a few of them that, they're not near the stream, and they just got mapped in.
Yep.
Wow, that's a big, big.
And whose obligation is it to, to know that, Mike?
Un- unfortunately, it's the homeowner.
Wow.
So, and what's worse is, is the lending institutions know it, so they can do one of two things, and I've experienced this in New London County. Some lending institutions will find out that there's new maps out here, they're gonna review them, and then they're gonna send letters out to everyone. Say you need flood insurance, or you're gonna, uh, we're gonna, uh, yeah, it's, it's not fun, so that's why I, I want to get ahead of that train, and so I'm trying to get the word out, so please pass it along.
Yep.
And the only appeal is if you get this elevation.
Yeah.
Survey.
Unfortunately, there, the FEMA's appeal process is very, it's, it, it's a very strict and structured process. And really, the elevation certificate is the only, uh, document that they accept as a, is a adequate, um, justification why you're considered outside of the flood hazard.
Well, is there such a thing as part of your property in and part of your property out, what if your house was out, that's so.
So, remember your company in Texas, do you know what they tell your bank?
What?
They, they tell your bank you're in.
Yeah, that's what I was told by the bank I use, yep.
Yep, and that's part of the problem, so then people go to refinance or purchase a property, that company in Texas will make those determinations. It may not even affect the home, but yet, it's in the property.
Well, also, they don't understand, the, the ones I'm dealing with are using hand drawn maps from the seventies.
Yeah, because I was about to say, you're using the Litchfield map, the, the upper Litchfield maps, what they're just getting, those will just become digitized with the new maps that are coming.
And they don't know the lake drains, it can't flood, it may wipe out wind stud, but it can't flood, it's got a hole in it.
So.
All right, Mike, anything else?
That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, Erin.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
And I second that.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna give the second to, to Sean this time. All in favor of adjourning, uh, the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously.